Join us to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for joining us for our May board meeting. And either virtually, I think we may have at least one person virtually or in person. We're glad that you're here. If you did not get an agenda, they're on the table in the room as you enter in the back. Face masks are also available there if you should desire to wear one. We have no requirement that you do, but with the growing pandemic in some areas, if you wish to wear one, they are back there. The agenda for the evening's meeting was posted on our door here and also on our website and on our Facebook page. Meeting is being video recorded and will be available through our website. After it's all set up, written minutes will be available on the website after later approved by the board. There'll be two opportunities for public comment. If you wish to speak, we'd ask you to do so after being recognized by the chair. Step up to the microphone and give your name, address, and virtually. You should have a hand raised icon where you can get the attention of our manager who's monitoring the virtual meeting. Just remember when speaking, come close to the microphone so that Wendy, who will be with us virtually, our recording secretary, can hear you. And with that, we would just go through self-introduction of the supervisors.
Dave Bruce.
Jeff Rogers.
Todd Crutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Reynolds.
And to my left, most of you know, is Todd Ziegler, our township manager. Wendy is not with us, and I see she is.
There she is.
With us virtually is our recording secretary. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, loud and clear?
Yes, very clear.
Good. And our solicitor, Tim Buck, has been excused by the board for this meeting. With that, we will go to our agenda. First item is approval of the minutes from our April meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the April minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments before we vote? If none, we shall vote on accepting the minutes.
Aye.
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 By votes to the affirmative, the minutes are accepted. We'll move to the treasures report. Questions or comments regarding the treasures report? I would just note that of the 249,000, it's probably good to note that 40,000 of that revenue number is for bonds, which will eventually flow back out again. Any comments from Todd on the report? Questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the treasury report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the treasures report. Any questions before we vote? Shall we?
Aye.
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 Aye. By votes to the affirmative, the treasures report is approved. We've reached our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in person or virtually who wishes to address the board at this time? Anybody virtually? If none, we shall move on. Our item is ordinance number 2022. This basically, we talked about a little bit last month, is to add new freedoms to the multi-municipality planning group for comprehensive plans we're coming forward on, if you want.
Yeah, this is a group that's been existence for quite a long time, Southern River County Mutual Plan Commission. The initial joint comprehensive plan was done back in 2000, I believe it was. It was the four boroughs in Freedom, Blight Rock, River, Shrewsbury Township. But in 2010, it's updated. Freedom Borough was not a part of that. They're still operating under the 1999-2000 version. So we're actually getting ready to do a complete update and improve these last two doors back into the group. Pretty confident. So this ordinance is just simply to legalize that and accept freedom to part of that.
Since it's not a zoning issue, it doesn't require a public hearing or anything, so we can vote on enacting that actually tonight. No questions or comments?
And make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-02.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a second. Thank you. So a motion and a second before we vote. Are there any questions? The vote would be on adopting ordinance 2022-02. I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. By votes to the affirmative, ordinance 2022-02 is thereby adopted. I believe the next couple, Todd, are just for information.
Yeah, this is informational. We talked about that last month, so we just have them on the agenda, let you know that they weren't forgotten about. But advertising requirements and so forth, they'll be driven to adoption next month.
So we have no action on 2023 or 04? Or 05, other than I think we were going to look at authorizing for advertising, but we did not do forward with it until it's adopted by Shrewsbury Borough first.
Correct. I'm going to ask the board to authorize advertising ordinance 2022-05, which amends the and states the wellhead protection ordinance. But make that condition on Shrewsbury Borough about the same ordinance without any
and which?
changes that there will be next week.
Oh yeah, we anticipate that happening.
Correct.
All right. And that's mainly just a language adjustment that the Wellhead Committee worked on.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. For those in attendance, if they are interested, it more clearly defines what bulk storage and a couple other related items, actually a lot of other related items, if Jeff remembers from the meeting, but it was a lot of gray area in the ordinance before as far as what could and couldn't be kept within the Wellhead area. And this gives more specific direction as far as amounts and more definite numbers.
Questions from anybody? Thank you, Dave. Or a...
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-09 with the condition that Shrewsbury Borough also adopts the same ordinance without any changes or modifications.
You didn't think you'd mean five or two of five?
I did mean five. Thank you. Thank you. I would like to amend my motion and the motion is to approve ordinance 2022-5 under the condition that Shrewsbury Borough also approves it without any changes or modifications.
And just for clarification, it's approved to advertise.
It's correct.
Yes.
You concur with that in your motion?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a second.
I'm gonna stop making motions tonight.
Okay, we have a second. So we have a motion and a second to approve for advertising 2022-05, which is some restatement from the Wellhead Protection Ordinance adopted some time back. Any questions? Comments before we vote? She'll vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, so we have approved ordinance 2022-05 for advertising. And now we have two resolutions. The first is just an addition to the Act Security Area talk.
Yeah, this is, we have the request of George Phillips for part of the end of West Ceiling, where it's 171 acres. So this resolution goes through probably his township's existing act security area. With the addition of that 171 acres, that brings the total acreage in the act security area in the township to 8,586 acres.
It's getting close to half of our ag area. Any questions or comments from anybody? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2022-09.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You gotta be quicker than that.
Yeah.
I'm just, it's all right.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve in addition to the Act Security Area and the resolution 2022-09. Any questions before we vote?
No questions, just a comment. I'm glad Bob did not have the same trouble I did when trying to formulate a motion. And I would vote aye.
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 Aye. By votes to the affirmative, resolution 2022-09 is approved. We have resolution 2022-10, which is, I guess, kind of the standard we get for a small flow type treatment facility.
Right. Yeah, this is for a property. It's 11083 Sawville Road, which is between Wyandotte and Tousbury. And this was a little, this was a little unique. See up here, pretty much wooded. Steeped bank in the back here. There's a stream along here. So they're not able to put in a conventional septic system or a sand mound. So they have to put in a thing called a small treatment package plant. But it just is, it's very small just to treat one home. So it goes through Pennsylvania DDP for approval or has to be ordered to permit and so forth. But one of the requirements is that we have to adopt the resolution to amend our Act 5372 to include this change to this particular property.
And also gets inspected by our city region board office and everything else, right? Any questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-10.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we vote, are there any more questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. By votes to the affirmative, thereby approving resolution 2022-10 on the small treatment facility. I think our next one is, that's all we have under ordinance and resolutions. Nothing else, right, Todd?
Correct.
So we move to subdivision and land development. I guess first up is the shops at Shrewsbury. Actually, we have a number of gentlemen here.
The plan, we, there's several modification requests that have been approved previously by the board. So all the boards looking at today is the actual land development plan of the final file. The project commission reviewed the Y S N E and recommended football point position at the C S Davidson product letter, February 15, 2022. And all those comments are repressed. And also, we need to receive comments and the executed recorded, I believe it's two easement agreements, including on the board side of E51.
Yes.
Then you have to leave those under the C S Davidson product letter and of course, Bob.
Is there any update on that?
Some, just mine up from two on the engineer. The clients have been speaking with the, both Tucson and Johnson. They've got verbal agreements. They're working with the board.
Okay, so you don't anticipate any?
At this point, they've got it worked out that it's going to the board.
Okay.
I think the other vision today, Jeff, maybe she had on here.
Oh, we have the N P D S permit, pending up permit. We're in the process of addressing them all to just that. But there's nothing on there that we do not have any intent, not intent to address if we will address them.
And also in conjunction with the stormwater easements that they need on this side. Just as we get regular with the Keller Brown down in Slayton, retiring to the states and have stormwater play through their state right away. We had to meet the permittee, but we entered into a separate agreement with them that they're responsible for maintenance and repair of that stormwater system that's connected and under E51. We do have a draft agreement in place. Solicitor Bump has looked through it. Their solicitor, their attorney has reviewed it as well, so that's pretty well, pretty well thought too, right there.
So that's, that's moving forward too.
And the 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 main property is the one responsible for the upkeep and whatnot, not the property that's
It would be the parcel owner.
Yeah.
The property owners, not the object.
Oh. Oh, yes, but there's two. What I'm saying, like, the easements on the adjacent properties for the stormwater, correct? It's not those property owners. It's the overall property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Owner of this property.
All right.
That the agreement is attached.
Very good.
Any other questions for the group? I guess I would just comment that I think it makes sense to move forward with a little bit of reluctance because there are a lot of things outstanding that we don't have any control over and some of even you don't at this time. But I know you've been trying to move this forward for a long time. I'm sure you share a lot of frustrations among your group that you haven't been able to do that, so.
We are well along in those, in the H O V process. The N P D S permit, I'm anticipating any gain that will have. If not the permit itself, we'll have minor comments. We've been through two recent cycles now to slow down T K there really slowly.
What I might suggest, and Todd and I discussed this a little bit, is that if we have a motion to approve, that it be contingent upon that if any of the things that have to happen yet result in any change to the plan, then the plan would have to come back for approval. So I think if we do that, I think we'd be okay, though. Leave it up to the rest of the board if you have any questions, further comments. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we give a final approval for the plan on the basis that all the conditions of the C S Davidson letter appropriately dated are completed and a contingency that in the event that the plan has to be changed for any, to accommodate any of the outstanding issues, we would come back for approval.
I'll second that motion.
You agree with that, Joe Todd? But.
Yeah, you might just want to add that the security aspect posted as well as the two separate agreements for stormwater.
Because that was going to C S Davidson letter, right? So we add that we, those two things added.
You give it that, right?
You did second. So we have a motion and a second. Are there questions? Before we vote, this would, with conditions, appropriate conditions, provide final subdivision approval for the plan for the shops at Shrewsbury. Further questions? I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. I vote to the affirmative. I think it's the next step.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Add form to the deal.
See y'all. See you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up would be the Antique Markets and St. Paul Lutheran Church. I think we have a representative from the cemetery.
Yes.
Commission?
On the second cemetery, the cemetery association.
Good to see you again.
Yes.
Okay. Between you and Todd, I want to give a brief explanation.
Yeah, I can just see a quick overview of Mr. Aubrey, as I did that, certainly welcome to. But basically, this is the intersection of Hayver, this is going to trail, the church sits on this side of there. Sits on, church sits on this side. This is a cemetery tract currently. It runs down here where the fine line is. There's two separate tracks. So what this add-on subdivision will do is it's going to merge these two tracks. And it's also going to add a 15-foot wide strip of land from the Antique Markets to the cemetery property. So what you're really approving tonight is the addition of this 15 feet by 347-foot strip of land from the Antique Markets to the cemetery. If anyone's familiar with that, if I understand correctly, there's a berm that runs along the cemetery with some pine trees and so forth on it. That berm and those pine trees will still remain on the Alish Market proper. So what they're basically doing is just correcting what they already installed, which is they're maintaining and adding that on. And what will happen then, track four, track two, and then an additional piece, there will be one new deed written or identified. This is just one parcel instead of three different tracks. Pretty straightforward, add-on subdivision.
We just went through that thing a little bit better and that Alicia down at Markets wasn't aware that, she didn't know anything on the other side of the pine trees. And I said, no, the line comes down alongside our cemetery. And we ask about possibly getting that another 15 feet. There's still eight to 10 feet roughly between of the property and where the trees are. So, you know, there's still a drop around that. And then also that track four was put on there when the expressway went through. Hay Road used to come alongside there. And they moved south, they moved it north. The entrance there, they moved it north about, you know, what's 70 feet, something like that? Eight feet, but you smell like this, yes. So there. And that was, that was all put onto the separate, the church cemetery, property. So what we're doing now is we're taking, Cemetery Association is going to have one deed for this whole property. It cleans it up so that in the event that something would happen to the church and it gets sold, then the cemetery is a separate entity.
Okay. If I have any other questions?
The other thing, if I can add, there were also three modification requests.
Yeah, we got a, act on others first.
And the first one was the critical environmental areas, showing existing features and then room wide, curved sidewalks. Staff and planning permission also are recommending that they be approved because there's nothing useful for those to be developed on this property.
All right, so our first action would be to approve those three modifications prior to acting on the subdivision plan.
And staff's in approval for very good. I'd make a motion to approve the modification request for the Antique Markets and St. Paul Lutheran Church.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the three modifications listed in the modification request that you have in your pocket. Are there any questions before we vote on that? She'll vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Modification requests have been approved. We would move then to a final approval of the add-on subdivision plan. Their motion, they called it that.
I'll make a motion to effectively approve the add-on subdivision plan.
We have a motion and a second for the final add-on subdivision plan approval. Questions from anyone before we vote? Hello?
Aye.
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 Aye. By votes to the affirmative, the add-on subdivision plan is approved as well. Thank you.
And we'll, we'll have to record. Right. I need that information. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I forget, don't forget the size of plants.
Oh, okay. All right, the next item is plan for you. Another reapproval of the plan. This is for Sussex Place, Phase Two, the final division plan. I would make a suggestion that if we're prone to reapprove it, that we only do it to our next meeting. Todd and I and the staff have had some discussion and we see that bonds and other things just keep going on and on and on and never come to a conclusion because we keep reapproving.
Okay.
And we have no obligation to approve beyond that 90 days.
Correct.
So I think as an incentive, especially to get this bond done, because right now, there's some risk to somebody that if they walked off the site, this is for the five houses near the school, they're a elementary school. No, no, this, yeah. No, this is Sussex Place. But it's also an issue with, with that one as well.
Yeah, and we, we also had another one. Wasn't either of these two, but we have another one that's been, we've been reapproving repeatedly.
Yeah.
It just simply because they don't want to post the bond because it's possible to respond. That's part of the plan process and approving process. And the comment was made to me that, oh, well, the $25 millimeter fee is cheaper for like the, than the bond, so.
But the purpose of the bond was to protect the township and protect residents and citizens if for some reason they don't complete. So we're kind of not protected when we don't have that bond in place.
Agreed.
Anyway, that's, that's my thought. I think there's a second issue too, and obviously you need to have an agreement completed with the borough for the maintenance of the pump station.
Why that's not completed by now, that should be pretty straightforward, I would imagine. They need to have an agreement in place with the sewer authority as to who, as what responsibility and ownership for that pump station. The sewer is going to be the H O A, but they need to get that in place as well.
With Sussex Place, aren't the, just any of the issues that Jeff had with them, the wooly, make conditions on that?
Well, what, what happens, they did, you know, there's still some that are still outstanding. But what we've discovered is that there's one or two developers in particular. When you do a preliminary plan approval, you're not required to post bonding. So at their own risk, they can do earth moving, they can install utilities and everything else, but they're certainly going at their own risk because they don't have a final plan. But under the, this town's planning code, one of the conditions of final approval is you have to post bond for these public improvements. So once the board gives a conditional approval, which includes that bonding, by law, they are not supposed to be doing any work until that plan is recorded and the bond is posted. And we have one developer who thinks, well, I got conditional approval, you know, they can get their financing or whatever. And they just don't want to spend the money to post the bond, but that leaves, you know, they up and walk away from the project and it's halfway done. We don't have any bonding.
We can't put it back together again.
So.
All right.
I would go ahead and make a motion that we reapprove the plan, but only until our next board meeting, which is June 1st, I believe.
Second.
Other questions before we vote?
I have a question. Please, can we can we ask them to perform and actually do the bond?
Yeah, that would be a condition. When I send out the new letter and all future letters, we're going to have to spell that out. We have to pass, we have to spell it out. No work can commence until the plan is recorded and bond, including posting of the bond. So if this goes through tonight, this motion, I'll be sent a new letter advising that it's been reapproved or additional for at least the next amount of things through June 1st. And they have to have all those outstanding conditions included, posting of the bond. And if that's not done by June 1st, the board has any way to deny reapproval, which means denied plan.
And they would have to start over.
We have a motion and a second. Are there no further questions? We'll proceed.
Just one more.
Okay, go ahead.
So the, because I've, this final plan, so there's only a plan, there's no building? Yeah.
This, this particular phase is no building yet now.
Okay.
Just a plan, but they This, this particular phase is no building yet now. Just a plan, but they did start to do some earth moving and installing some pipes and or this dorm order. And that's what they, they shouldn't be doing any, they shouldn't be doing earth moving once the final is activated.
Okay. Sussex Place is, I think, three phases altogether, right? One is about built out or.
They're, they're in the process of two.
Bill's place? Yeah, so, okay. Right off the mound. Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be another, I think, nineteen years.
Right, right, okay.
More parallel with.
There'll be a phase three as well.
Are you going to, in the letter you're sending, also note the ordinance that they're in violation of?
Yeah.
By, by doing it?
Yeah, we'll cite the section of the.
Good, good. All right. Thank you. Did you have any more questions?
No, I'm good. You're good now?
Chairman?
We shall vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I, I vote to the affirmative. We reapproved through June first. Thank you. We come to reports. Manager is always first up. And what you gave us, you'd like to mention, Todd?
No, I mean, in particular, those put out there over the night, I think I reported last month. For the thirty-three properties on East Wood Drive, we had one who authorized us to move forward, committed to repay the township has not done so. We haven't got any response for about two and a half months. So we did file several complaints. So we had one more that paid, paid full. So we had twenty-seven that are paid full, five that are making monthly payments. And then we have the one who filed this.
It's still not bad for not having an organization to deal with and having to do it through individuals. So appreciate your efforts on that.
And it looks like Lance Todd could go on the box, do the six, can't he?
At this point in time, I, I believe he's working on a refinance, but I, I don't know. That's just, this basis of phone calls I've received, but I don't think that's for sure.
Any other questions the board has for Todd? Report from the solicitor. Now the zoning officer and codes enforcement report in front of you. Added quite a few, I guess. That looks like seventeen were added. It's only three closed. Eleven continuing and fourteen just reported. So there are, by my count, about fifty items that are.
We need to start with the grass layers.
Much work to be done.
Yep.
I did provide, I think everyone has a copy of the
Yes.
Sewer enforcement officer's report that came in on Monday.
Like a lot of added activity in that area compared to prior reports, a lot of, a lot of real estate inspections. I guess over half of these are real estate inspections, so.
Yeah, see, three of those are as to do with the real estate transfer inspection, one property looks like we had two re-inspections, previous failures.
And one place I saw the state police turned some vehicles, get them to, to the rest of these vehicles that don't do.
That was the one we talked to about in, at P-Sats. Is that the property?
Yeah, that was, that's Hill Road. Yeah, that was the one where they had, had four cars, unregistered, unlicensed on the private property. Then they moved them to the street and I sent them a letter that they can't be on the street because they don't have registration, you know, no license or inspection or anything. So then depending when you went by, it was, they were all back on the yard or else they were on the street or somewhere on the street, somewhere in the yard, back and forth. And we did file, we still do have a hearing. Well, at least we filed, we waited for the, that's a plea, but so I ended up contacting the, the state police and they came down and noticed that we're sitting on the street without any registration inspection until three of the four, one was still on the property.
They even had the same Maryland license tags that you.
Yeah, two vehicles had a Maryland tags on with the same plate.
Now the hunch towards being about that.
Wow.
So I will say one thing, I got a call by the end of the day and then suppose I heard from them from when I started sending letters.
They were here that day too, then.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you called them.
Yeah, I called them.
Well, good, that was.
I'd like to do it, but unfortunately you get to a point where they don't respond to letters and notices.
Mm-hmm.
But talking to the owner, I expect full compliance based on that conversation. Because I explained that if they bring the property into compliance prior to the date that they have to enter a plea that will withdraw, they'll have to pay a hundred dollar fine plus court costs. And she said, well, that's cheaper than the fifteen hundred dollars that we were seeking in fines plus the penalty. So so I, I expect them to comply and that should be all that's.
State police acted very quickly though, didn't they?
Yeah, we, I had it down there one time earlier and that particular trooper called me and said, went back and spoke to, they moved back at the barracks and said there wasn't much they could do, which I didn't think was much. I didn't think that was correct. So when Art and I were up at the P-Sats conference, state police said, we're rude there. So I asked them about it and they brought up the section like, yeah, they should be able to do so. I called up and talked to what role, kind of sense speaker or something, I don't know his name. And he's like, yeah. And he said, I'll send someone down out and you know, it's okay. Never gone a moment.
Nope.
Any other questions for Todd on the zoning, sewage enforcement and pollards reports? And I will move to maintenance. They have that report in front of you. It looks like we have one pretty critical pipe that needs to be replaced on.
Yeah, it's not a major route. Those are, Apollo, which connects Bonner to
Angler Bridge.
Angler Bridge. It's a small pipe. It's not a large pipe or anything, but it is in bad shape. Good news is we just got a notification, I think it was on Monday, that we can see the permit. So Mike has that on the top of his priority list to get that one done first before you consult some of the others.
Park maintenance list looks good. Quite a few of the items that were identified that needed to be done, over half of them have been completed. So that looks good. Then we have notice from PennDOT that in two thousand and twenty-three, there are three bridges in the township that I guess they planned.
They're, they're actually, they're, they call them candidates at this point in time. They haven't been finalized.
I would imagine Haynes one of them.
Yeah. No, Toad Valley, these are for bridges. Toad Valley, right down by Clearview. The other one is Baltimore Street, right there at Walker Road. And the other one is, it's actually a local road. It's not a state road, but it's they give an address of Five Forks Road, but it's where we intersect with Hope World Township. So they're right there.
Off, off of Bros?
Um, I'm not, I don't know where Five Forks.
Well, Bros Road goes in, goes out towards Stewartstown Baptist or whatever it is up there on eight fifty-one. And that area is Five Forks, where those five roads come together.
Yeah.
So if, if you go towards, towards Bros then.
The first two, they use the address that's in Truett Township because they're fully located in our township. The other one, they're identifying as Hope World, but it's ordered as Hope World.
Now we have another conflict. Five Forks is also where Warrior and Angler and Bowser have all come together.
Yeah.
See, the only, the only bridge there is is the little ti, is the little tiny railroad bridge right off eight fifty-one as you head towards Five Forks.
Cross is near Cree.
Oh, 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 then yeah, right, yeah, okay, right, right there, Tana and Bros.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Other questions? Maintenance report.
The only other thing I just want to, just so that you're aware, I have made contact with PennDOT. I have received a call from the chief over at the real power company. And stop bars at the intersection, Campbell Road, it says one trail or too close to the intersection. They need to be moved back a little bit because they have difficulty with getting their apparatus around and turning it particularly the ladder job if that's out. So just so that you're aware, if you hear anything about that, I did make contact with PennDOT. They're wanting to take a look at that. I anticipate though.
The, the area on the trail needs to be moved back?
The, the stop bar for, if you're heading north on the trail, the stop bar, turn left on the Campbell.
Needs, needs to be moved further south. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I came.
Campbell Road, that one has to be moved further west.
All right, yeah, I, I came through there within the last week and an eighteen wheeler was turning south off of Campbell. And, and he got lucky there wasn't anybody else at the intersection because he was all over both sides of the road.
So I just wanted to make you aware.
That's a state responsibility, right?
I, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm anticipating that they will make that correction because they approved that permit.
Right.
And it worked on that installation.
And they're both state roads.
I mean, it's, it, it's, but the intersection in all the markings are the responsibility of the township. It's a permit to us. But I, I, I want to push that they make the correction because really it's not the worst that they want.
Sure.
So.
If they can't do it, is that something we would do or do we have to contract them out?
We have to. If they don't do it, we have to contract someone out.
Yeah, because you, your interface is all the controls and all there.
But we, but regardless, even if they don't do the work, we have to get their approval.
Right.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
Good, I meant to ask about that. So glad you brought that up. I have C S Davidson report in front of you. Again, a couple of things that you're probably aware of. Red questions. Good, that report. I'll move to emergency management. I don't know if Stan has anything he wants to put down here.
I want to say along with Stan, you want to have a tour, the, the N C room is bringing down, you build folks. You can get a feel for what's in there.
I think we gave you too much room.
Take some square footage back.
All right, you have Planning Commission report and subdivision land development. Any questions on any of the remaining reports? Brad, is there anything you want to report on if you have the fire company?
Forty years, they do a lot of run out. So I'm always surprised how far these guys have done.
All right, under committees, we have not needed to have an American Rescue Plan Committee, but I believe Todd didn't get our report filed on time. As from what I'm reading, many municipalities have had trouble filing that report. So we, we did get ours done.
Yeah, it's now only an annual report instead of a quarterly.
Right.
Unfortunately, we never had a quarterly, we didn't handle. So this is our first one. It wasn't the easiest site to navigate, but we got it done. So now it's.
From what I call, a lot of people didn't get it done and went to P-Sats to try to get some help. We about had a sewer committee meeting. I would note that Todd and I did meet with members of Shrewsbury Borough this week, was this week, or Friday of last week? Friday of last Friday. And we just asked for kind of a two-on-two meeting, which they accommodated to just have a rather informal discussion about EDUs and how we get some. So it may be appropriate, Dave, it may be appropriate that we would have a follow-up sewer committee meeting that we could relay that and where, where we are, but Todd might be able to throw some times out and arrange that.
Sounds good.
I'm jumping ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I said we might want to get a sewer committee meeting. You could.
Yeah.
Or we're throwing some dates out to the group and we can kind of give everybody an update. It looks like there's a little bit of light fairly soon at the end of the tunnel and then some more light later on, but there, there seems to be some reasonable cooperation out there now.
Look forward to hearing about it.
Supervisors comments. I would just note the number of meetings I went to for potential developers, the L G A C. Todd and I visited three office furniture showrooms in Harrisburg, Lancaster and out where else looking at some potential new furniture we may need in the new building. And I spent two days, April the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth at the P-Sats conference. And we had the meeting with the sewer authorities and also met at their request with people that have a potential warehouse over on Elm Drive. And again, just kind of a informal meeting that they had requested. Are there comments on their supervisors we should offer?
Was there anything mentioned at all about upgrading Elm?
That's actually what the entire meeting was about.
It seemed receptive to that?
Much more receptive than they were in the past. I'm not sure we, they're where, everywhere we want them to be, but they in a scale like this, it's probably about like that now. So yeah, they're, they're, we got a long. Yes, they, yep, yes, they do. If they didn't know it, they sure do now. They seem to be accommodating, but that's all still back at staff. So they're going to have to prove that to staff first. But so in my personal opinion, it's not the most desirable thing to be there, but you know, you got to let it go somewhere.
They just, they were kind of traffic, they have one of their.
Seven hundred and fifty vehicle trips, but that includes employees and trucks. And that's a wild guess because they have no idea what's going there. Yeah, twenty-four hours. Oh yeah, I think it'd be twenty-four. It'd have to be.
Yeah.
Because that's a vehicle every two minutes.
All those branches, I think that.
Yeah. Yeah, we, you know, I mean, they even, they even wanted to know if we were, would provide any assistance in helping them with you know, tax incentives and things like that. I think they learned pretty quickly, we're not interested in going to that for that. But I think they may try with the county, but it's early in, in the planning stages, but it's a six hundred and fifty thousand square foot or six hundred and thirty thousand square foot facility. There are issues with how you enter and how you exit and how many entrances and exits you have. The width of the road and the depth of the road, just to handle the traffic. You know.
So across from Rabbit Transit?
Yes.
Yep. And they own, well, I don't know, do they own any of the property? Phil, Phil owns a piece that they need to make it happen.
Phil himself or the conglomerate?
Phil himself on the one.
This is first coming north, eighty-three. This is exit four. This is the Keen Farm right here. Phil owns this parcel. Phil owns fifty-seven Q, this parcel. So what they would be looking to do is subdivide. I, I'm not quite sure where the line would go, but subdivide this portion off, but also this piece would be subbed off of the main farm would be merged with this parcel. So it just becomes one big. This piece would be subbed off of the main farm would be merged with this parcel, so it just becomes one big parcel here. And then the warehouse would sit right in here.
You say move that grade going out there, didn't you?
Yeah, they moved that several years ago, moved it.
Moved that, yeah.
Yeah, that sat right here.
Yeah.
So staff has, I think, a whole lot of issues that they're working on, I don't know how close that is to exit.
Yeah.
Just at least know it's there and I guess we kind of identified everybody, the road is the first item, if that can't be handled, then it's. It's probably a no-go.
Right.
What's the company name that's? It's called Hillwood, right?
Hillwood, Hillwood is a real estate company.
That's what they are.
Purchasing you the development of the building, but they don't actually, they've been. But our understanding is they wouldn't have any potential tenants at this point, so.
They just built, they just finished building one, was it West or East Manchester?
East Manchester.
That's about the same size and they just build them up and down the east coast to spec.
If they build it, they will come.
They will come, that's.
Heard that somewhere.
There are rumors, there are rumors that that's all they are, that there may be interest in Amazon, but. As a, like a local kind of place, but that's just a rumor.
They might have to deal with Amazon, Amazon's part of the whole.
So, we'll continue to share information as that moves along. Any other questions on that? Alright, now we can jump, I think Todd, give us an update on any municipal complex status. Did you get to tort, Dave, or didn't?
I did not have a chance to get there yesterday, no.
Todd could do that another time.
Yeah, I mean, no.
Yeah.
Mid-afternoon ideally, just depends on when I get to leave.
That's good because the contractors are kind of out of there.
Yeah, there's about three thirty, that one's around, even if they are, still going on. If anyone else wants to pay or if we don't know, I'll pitch in there. Per for hiring, what's that? Per for hiring, sir?
As, as long as you turn the lights on and give us a sire or two.
The, you have copies of the construction, we had it's last reset and just wrapped up three sixteen, so that's a month or two. Will they get to the, you know, well, it's. Then moving on, we have two change orders, the first one, C I, construction change order number five. This one was at the request, is a result of a request from the contractor. I don't know if you recall, we had talked about the mezzanine above the maintenance workshop area. We initially talked about maybe putting an access door from the outside on the eighty-three side. So we looked at that, but just because of the structural integrity and so forth in the building, we looked at. What's proposed now is that we'll actually have an access door that we can get to the mezzanine from inside the wash bay. So that access will be on the inside and they priced out for. They galvanized the band door, hollow band door on the sliders versus the coral. Galvanized metal door, for that to be fully installed, framed, material and everything is six thousand five hundred and four dollars. That includes the diamond plate that we have to put in more adjust to access the mezzanine as well. So that's the first one.
And that clearly was not originally planned for and is an added effort that might really want.
Correct. The second one is one that. You know, Art and I talked about, I know some of the important numbers going toward the building. It's something that has to be done, but we need to probably. Probably we need to sit down, have a conversation with the architects, so there's several things that, you know, we believe should have been picked up. You know, at the design point, and certainly as you move along, you might come across a thing or two. We have a couple of things that were major, and this is one of them, and I will do the best. I think I explained and showed everybody yesterday, so if anyone, Dave, you might not. I might not be the best at explaining this, but I would do my best. This is the break room for the maintenance department and these windows were designed to go up to the ceilings. And the, the headers. For the windows and for moving some of the rafters and so forth, the ceiling joints interfered with this. They are actually over top of a window frame, but down lower than the height of the window.
It's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, so we'll be getting a little smaller window, not, not significantly smaller, I think that drops down probably to a foot or so. From the ceiling, maybe put in a half. So they had to, they, they gave us credit on here, sixty-four hundred dollars for the aluminum glass. Smaller windows, but then for labor, material. So that's the panel that'll go on the outside. It's a heavy gauge aluminum, which is a Kiner finish. It'll, it'll be slate grade to match the face of the building. There is another grade that's a little lower grade, but. It has a tendency to, and this was confirmed by, actually that was actually drawn up by ECI, the general contractor. We would probably be doing maintenance on it in a couple of years because it has a tendency to change colors and corrode quicker than what the sun is with. So it involves. One, two, three, I believe it's a total of six of these windows and that totals the twenty-five thousand five hundred and three dollars. So there are the two change orders.
Well, this one is nothing we've asked for.
Nothing, they're mistaken planning, this cost us actually twenty-five thousand?
It's, it's a result of a mistake on the design plans.
When do we have to have this formally approved by?
The work's done.
So they're waiting on payment?
No.
Okay, but you, you're, you're planning on.
We need to formally, if the building was going to come to a standstill, we didn't do it, I mean, it has to be done.
Yeah, we have one or two more in the past like that too that we've talked about and. We just need to really, I think, have a sit-down with the architect, we shouldn't be paying for this.
No.
In mind, you know.
Which is, which is kind of why I wanted to know when it was due by, but.
This, this is somewhat similar to an issue that's going on with the prime sub for the. The plumbing installing, the roof drains, and part of the building. The general construction plans show the roof scuffers that capture the water, it shows the down pipes. And tying into the drain pipes that go underneath the, the concrete, you know, and out.
Here's hoping they got what they needed because that concrete's already poured.
Well. Where an issue has come about and there is a dispute going on between, but it's important to us because at the end of the day. We're going to have to make a decision as well, depending on how that outcome is.
Mm-hmm.
But the point is, in the general construction plans, it shows, you know, everything there. On the plan set for the plumber, it shows the roof drain, it shows a pipe going out the bottom. But no pipe in between and no fittings and anything else, so they did not bid that material. So of course, they weren't paid for that.
Mm-hmm.
The architects are saying that, oh, we're not going to approve that payment because, you know, that, that was part of the bid. And, you know, they give a material list and so forth and, and my understanding is, it was on the material list that pipe. But the plumber missed that.
It was only going.
But it also wasn't shown on the plan to lie there.
Mm-hmm.
And the architect, you know, I saw the architect, as he says, and it's also stated that he says, all plumbing systems must be provided, that are provided, must be complete. So. A plumber, you know, in my mind, a plumber should know when they look at the plan and they see.
There's probably a pipe there.
And they see it come down and there's a pipe, I would think you would ask a question or something, right? So anyways, what, what's happened there is to keep the project moving forward, there was a change order directive. Issue which basically says, we agree to disagree at this point in time, we're going to move forward, we'll fight about it later. In simplest terms.
Alright.
So.
That's pretty much what we should do here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I would think we, we can approve the first one.
And we.
And I think we should wait on the second one, at least until you've got a chance to discuss it with them again.
Well, I think that, I think that discussion has to be with the architect. I mean, my, my belief is, I don't think that. The general contractors, ECI has already done the work, paid for the material installed for us.
So you think we should pay the contractor?
I believe.
And we should fight with the architect to get a refund?
Take it up with the architectural part.
Well, the architect's term, it sounds like it's an architectural part issue.
Yeah, the, the general contractor did what they were directed to do by the architect.
And it was a problem.
And it was a problem, to fix a problem.
Okay.
Which I didn't know about the problem, you know, after the problem.
Sounds like a problem.
To give you another example of some things that, that there's been some issues, they've been able to get around them. One is they had to drop the ceiling height throughout the entire building because. What's on the plans isn't driving like the. G C plans, general plans are not driving with the plumbing plans and so forth, so they couldn't fit all the ductwork in. And they actually swap, use slash pipe even to offset some of that, so that's an issue.
Wow, that mechanical room's an issue too, that though.
Yeah.
I, I gotta, to me, they need to correct that.
And we have another issue with the storage room in the front of the building with the roof line matching up, which we're working through that. But again, that's something that, you know, the plans that were presented to the board, the board approved are not what. They put out on the street. And then the, the last thing that, you know, we can fix it, we've called it, but it's one of those things that just. This one really has your head scratched, you can't see it here, but in this corner. There's a window that comes up to the full corner and then a window that comes along back this way that's full corner, so it's all window and corner. They have a four-inch wrapped pipe, drain pipe, coming down and exposed, it's not behind anything. It's really disappointing because they're a reputable firm that's been around a long time, they've done a lot of jobs and a lot of nice work.
We also have an issue with whether or not there should be a retaining wall.
Correct.
The parking lot, we say yes, they say no, so there are several issues that. At Todd's invitation, I started with this last one to attend the bi-weekly meetings just to show. That there is a major concern on the part of the board, you know, just to kind of back up Todd, he's like one against fifteen when he goes to these meetings.
Let me know the next news.
So, so I've, and I've tried to send that message, I don't, I don't know if it got through, but it said there's a concern from the board. That there should not be all of these changes, but again. I don't know, there are problems with change orders, if it's something we're requesting. Absolutely. But if it's not from what we're requesting, we should not be getting it with them. And neither should the contractors for most of these, most of these, it's at the architect. It's an architectural screw, for many.
Yeah, and, and even if you had a couple change orders that depict little, these are major things, they're not, they're not small.
This is twenty-five, twenty-six thousand dollars of taxpayer money and money that we didn't plan on.
Yep.
Having, you know, to pay out as we look to be able to pay for this from the current revenue.
One other one, not, not to belabor this meeting, but the slate floors. That were planned for the lobby and so forth, that were now going to the polished concrete. Because the problem was the transition of one inch leaving the lobby going into the boardroom, into the restrooms, into the office. Leaving that kind of lip, so.
So we had to do away with.
We had to do with the, the slate floor, we do with the polished concrete, which will be fine, it'll still be a nice problem.
But did, did they meet today to give us?
I, I did, and I was, I can pull that up, give you the exact number, but the.
We get a cost reduction for that and that was one thing.
That was a blue slate, right?
Yeah, and at the media, we had with them this week, I said, we need to have that for the board.
We get a credit of twenty-two thousand eight hundred for the blue slate, but to add the polished concrete. The, the ground coat for all areas, which I think we need, because it's a little pity when we do the sanding. Which is twelve hundred dollars for, for the building and the joint filler for the lobby joints, which is five hundred and sixty dollars. The net change is a deduct, a credit that will get a fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
You know, in my mind, we could also make an argument that they should eat all of that because we're not getting what we wanted.
It's a good point, you know, we're not. So what, what, why?
Approving this tonight.
Right.
Why is it low, why was it higher than it was supposed to be?
They didn't design it right.
Yeah, I mean, why, why wouldn't, if you're designing floors, you know, and slate.
Pay attention, Stan, things you can hope for.
You, you would think that, you think about the transitioning. Can't do that.
Yeah, that this wasn't designed right, when they got it there, they couldn't do it. So while we were, it would have looked a little nicer with what we had, but it's also nice to see a deduct. But you could look at that and say, well, we're not getting what we want, why should we pay you anything?
You know, we should be getting, we should be getting the twenty-two thousand eight hundred credit and they should be paying the difference to ECI.
That's what I say.
I mean, ECI, ECI deserves what these change orders are, they've done the work and they will do the work. But I believe our argument is with the architect.
Yeah, I agree, all this is stuff that didn't, the plants just didn't drive together.
Do we have any leverage with the architect?
Probably not.
Well, would the architect also have some type of performance insurance that if they screw up?
The vulnerability areas of missions.
Right.
They should have all of that. And I, I think, you know, when we, when Art and I had five months of sitting in or whatever, or other board members. You know, I, I don't know that we, want to talk about that, but. I think it should be Kevin and Frank Dittney for.
Yeah.
He's actually with Shrewsbury Borough for many years, so he knows this area well, his name is well.
Okay.
But, so, anyway, yeah, we definitely need to set that meeting up, need to have that conversation with the architect, but.
So what happens if the board doesn't approve this one tonight? Nothing really happens, it's done.
Well, we, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be penalizing the contractor who's caught in the middle of it.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Todd, we, we should pay the, the contractor for the work they did and, and take it up with the designer.
I disagree, we don't pay it now at all, I mean, we don't agree to do it now. That's, I mean, that's got to be worked out, we don't want to pay it now, you, you pay it now.
We don't want to pay it now. You you pay it now, you know, you might as well forget. I I I'm willing to make a motion to accept the number five. And and not do anything with number six until a later day.
They haven't asked, they haven't put in for this included in their payment request, the twenty five thousand. So we don't hold money from this month if we now approve that.
Can we take these one at a time and set a vote together?
Yeah, let's do the first one.
Yeah, and and actually, if if the consensus board is, if Jeff's motion is to approve. Change order number five, period, that's his motion, and there's a second, you vote on that. If there's, you don't even have to make a motion to deny, hold, or reject, if there's just no action.
Well, I'll change my motion to just to approve change order number five.
And just to clarify, we're going off the dollar amounts, because mine says change order twelve. For the sixty five hundred. I'm not sure where the numbers are.
Yeah, it it's, and I apologize, I need to talk about that. They, if you look, they said there's through. Pending change order number, I think that's up to number twelve. But when the official change order comes to us, they, if you remember, ECI, we had one that had four different items. So that's their number, you know, four, five, six, seven.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve.
Change order five, which is the sixty five hundred dollar.
Is there a second? I'll say it. We have a motion in a second to approve the sixty five hundred and four dollar. Change order. Questions before we vote on that one? So that change order is approved, and we requested it, it should be. Do you vote, is it gonna hurt us with the contractor or anybody, in your opinion, if we just don't act on this at all?
No, I don't think at this point, no. Because you don't need to take any formal. Table, it could just be a form of a census that will table this until next month.
I think that makes sense.
And and we can get that conversation with the architect or architect, architect. Architecture firm, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but we we can get that meeting wi- with them within the month. Then I I would agree to to table it for for this month.
Just to table that. And of course, it isn't just this one, it's kind of like.
Were the others already adjusted, dealt with, obviously not the the slate, because that one just came in. But that was more of a reduction anyway, but still costs that we we incurred, because we're not getting what we wanted.
There was one or two other smaller ones.
And then whi- which ones have been approved and paid and which ones are still pending?
And like the one on the corner of the building where that may not add any money, it still isn't giving us what we thought we were going to get. I mean, so we have that kind of whole package, and you're right, I think you gotta go right to the top. You know, to have that discussion. We did ask the um, main contractor if he had been in a situation where the architect. Gave up money for that, and said, I've never been in a job where that happened, but we may be the first. But it has to be pursued, and we just can't roll over and say, keep charging this guy.
And it was also made that for new construction, they never encountered this many change.
That's exactly right.
Interesting.
So that's one of the toughest jobs they've had. Okay. Um, if you, I certainly would make myself available on any other board member that would want to to. To meet, I'd like to know about it as well, wherever.
If it's later in the afternoon, I wouldn't mind.
Are we all allowed to go?
Yeah, you're not making any decisions.
We can do that as an informational like thing with more than.
Let me know what it is.
Be very frank about it, it it could be considered potential litigation. I mean, it could be.
We better, we better make sure Tim is available.
Is that a meeting we would need soon, or is that? You don't wanna, we wanna try to be friendly about resolving, but we also want to be firm in our intentions.
I was never in business allowed to screw something up. And not stand back, but I had a. I had to make it right, if it was me, it was my whole life.
I think we all share that, so.
Sorry, Wendy, I rambled over.
Well, it's it's important. It's a lot of money, you know, it's important to us and every taxpayer in the township. Okay. That said, you want to address the payments?
The next three, um, is your own ones. None of these change orders are these applications for payment. So they've been reviewed, the work's been completed, signed off by. Frank Dittner himself. So we look for a motion to authorize payments.
This is ECI, Man Plumbing, and North Bay Mechanical. Any amount of two.
Yeah, ECI would be application for two hundred five thousand, two hundred seventy five dollars and three cents. Man Plumbing and Heating Application for Payment Number Seven. Uh, that's actually seventeen thousand, four hundred thirty five dollars and thirty cents. North Bay Mechanical Application for Payment Number Eight, thirty seven thousand and twenty six dollars.
Make a motion to approve payments to those. Three entities for the uh, dollar amounts you so eloquently listed.
Well, second. I have a motion in a second to authorize the payments set forth in the agenda. Questions before we vote? Call for vote? I vote to the affirmative, those three payments are approved. Are any, so I mean, there's no other new business, we move on to old business? I'm sorry, so I mean, there are no other. Um, it's just under municipal complex, we'll move on to old business, old becomes before new, doesn't it? First thing is just for comment, Todd.
Just just information, let you know that. Um, it looks like the consortium of York County municipalities for the comp K S franchise deal. Um, last year I had, we're up to twelve municipalities, we were the second one to sign one. So we will get that reduced rate. So this one, let's just order. And then the second item is just to make you aware that the. Township's official map amendment will be heard by York County Planning Commission at their main seventeenth meeting. And we'll discuss that then at our.
They sent that notice to Jesse with C S Davis. Is she planning on attending? Good, good, okay. So we shouldn't really need to have anybody else. And I'll come up at the LGAC meeting on Monday. I'll be in Ocean City, but I'll participate virtually in that, so that. But you know, the issue, if there is any, will be, we are doing the map before the comp plan, we're supposed to do one. In the in the opposite order. Alright, can we under do business? Or did you guys? So we have a request for a large scale burn, burn at Summit Grove. I didn't even realize, I mean, if Summit Grove was in the, the whole campus and in the township, right?
That's what I was just showing you here.
Oh, okay, you anticipated that question.
Yeah, this is the. This is all Summit Grove. All of this is in New Freedom Borough, this little piece right here is in Shrewsbury Township.
That's where they want to do the.
And that's where you want to do the work, and it makes sense, because that area looks like it's.
Pretty heavily wooded, yeah. So starting forest fires.
So the the large scale burn would be, unfortunately, probably based in the township.
I'm I'm assuming, uh, Rose will be aware.
Correct, they'll have to make that aware of it.
Okay, make a motion to approve. The outdoor burn permit, sorry, I'm adding on to my motion, uh, for Summit Grove.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Summit Grove, large scale burns, questions before we vote? Call for vote? I vote to the affirmative, so the burn is approved. Now we're looking at the award for calibrated chip chipping, Todd?
Yeah, um, this, you know, we do annually. Uh, we had. Fortunately, we had one company bid. Um, and that's pretty much the way it's been the last three or four years. Yeah, it's the same company that we've been using, um, for the last several years. And the calibrated chipping, fifty five thousand square yards. Is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the fog seal, which is a asphalt, uh. Seal coat put over the top of the calibrated chipping is nineteen thousand, three hundred fifty, so the total. Would be one hundred ninety nine thousand, four hundred ninety four dollars. Do you have budget, three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the calibrated chipping? And that still leaves a hundred fifty thousand for Mike to do, you know, any of the paving work here in the township.
So the two hundred thousand isn't because it came in under what we thought, it's just because that's a piece.
That's a piece.
The rest would come. And it's gone up significantly, but I guess that's understandable with the the cost.
Yeah, keep in mind, if you look here, at the eight year history, last year. Um, it was a hundred forty seven thousand, the sixty one thousand square feet of calibrated chipping. We did no fog seal last year. If we're comparing calibrated chipping to calibrated chipping. Uh, last year, we paid two dollars and forty one cents per square yard for calibrated chipping. This year, it's up to three dollars and twenty four cents.
But in the past, it's been as high as.
Three back in two thousand nineteen.
Can we, uh, can we award this, since we only got one bid?
Yes, this we can. What you're thinking of with the RFP. Was because of being federal money.
I had a question. I seem to recall some discussion about fog sealing the last year or the year before. Where it was something new that we hadn't done before, we weren't sure if it was worth the money, et cetera, et cetera. Did we uh, do a couple of different roads and test it out?
No, this is.
This is the first time we we're gonna be using it then?
Time that we do it. There was one municipality, North the North Township, that had some issues with it. But we've done, Mike and I have done some research and checked with others and and. I don't know what the issue was there, that was not typical and result with fog sealing. Um, but you'll see Mike's proposing any thirty two thousand square foot.
Of the fifty five that we're doing.
Does it basically extend the life?
Yeah, it it helps keep the uh.
Not not get the complaints of flying up against everybody's car.
They were probably driving too fast. Sorry, everyone couldn't see my smirk. All right, uh, I make a motion to approve the uh, the bid to um. I I don't see a company name on here, uh, ref- refuse and recy- no, no.
Russell Standard, if you look at both the unit price and the total.
Uh, thank you. Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, the the bid to Russell Standard in the amount of. One hundred ninety nine thousand, four hundred ninety four dollars for calibrated chipping and fog sealing.
Oh, second. I have a motion in a second to approve the calibrated chipping. Award, any questions before we vote? I vote to the affirmative, we'll be awarding the calibrated chipping to Russell Standard. Now we have maybe a little bit of a surprise, the two thousand twenty two refuge and recycling bid tabulation. We thought we were going to get a third bid, didn't we, at one time?
Yeah, well, we did have requests from Waste Management, but they did not submit a bid. So we did have three requests for Public Service, who's our current caller. Penn Waste, who was our previous caller, then we did a request for bid specs from. Waste Management, but they did not submit it. As you can see here, the. Bid was for a three year contract. And then we have the optional two year extensions, uh, at intervals of one year. Which would have to be mutually agreed upon by the holder and the township. As you can see, our current rate, uh, for the year is three hundred eleven dollars for full service. Penn Waste was the lowest bidder, three hundred forty two dollars. Republic was going to go up to three hundred forty five dollars. Um, and if you look for year one, year two, year three, as well as the optional year, the fourth and the fifth year. Um, Penn Waste was the lowest bidder, uh, for all years and all services.
Guessing what business?
And there's really no decision for us, because we were bound by M P C to award to the lowest.
You know, the only thing, the only option that I know you would have is.
Performance.
To, you can, you have the right to reject any and all bids. But there's no other companies that I'm aware of that would bid.
Yeah, the only one big enough is probably Waste Management.
Yeah, and they they had the bid specs low and advanced, but for some reason.
They had enough work.
Well, it goes up substantially, maybe that's a surprise, given the cost of fuel and. Fees at the dump and all that stuff.
That fifty years is starting to get scary with how much it's gonna be. Well, uh, since our hands are tied, I guess this is more of a formality. I mean, I guess we could refuse, which is ironic considering it's a refuse and recycling bid debulation. I'm full of jokes tonight, I'm sorry.
The current with Republic, what is their extension price? What was that?
Exorbitant?
I do not recall all times. But our contract was that. We have to mutually agree upon it, they don't already give us notice that they will not.
Yeah, they 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 wanted to rebid, yeah. Um, did we have such issues with Penn Waste? I know it's changed hands since, but previously with missing places like we've had with Republic.
I mean. I have never, in all my years in this government, found the trash hole that never ever missed someone.
Fair enough.
But with that.
Regularly, weeks at a time?
No, with that said. Previously, Penn Waste did provide a much better service. Fewer miss collections. But again, frankly, they were a local company, uh, been operated by North County. Um, that's not the case anymore, because they sold out, I think, the third largest waste collar in the U S. So they're now part of a big, big company.
Isn't that who the borough uses, you know, Stan? Are you aware of any major issues?
Well, like you guys are saying, I mean, for a store, occasionally you have, you know, a miss. So I I I can tell you, my conversations with other municipal managers, you know, Penn Waste. Um, that just made the comment that you could tell it's been longer locally. So I I don't know that. I don't know how different the level service will be, but.
But we can't disqualify them on that basis.
The last contract you will, you and the borough flip off. How do you like who you have now?
I I think that, um, they just do a good job of out guessing each other when it. Come here, they they, because they know what the other guy bid, they, and I think here, Penn Waste just tries to guess. Where they would be, and they guessed right.
That, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm putting the pieces together here, because the borough has their meeting a week after us, don't they? And the Penn, the Penn Waste representative, the, the last time we bid, asked us to rebid after he knew what the other guy's number was. Everyone remembers that, so he had a general idea of how much it was gonna be at that point. And then he went over to the borough and, uh, and, and underbid him and got that job. That makes sense. Anyway, um, I make a motion to approve the, uh, the low bidder, and, uh, it's, it's not ideal, but it has to. We have to have trash service, so make, make a motion to approve, uh, Penn Waste for the, through your contract with two-year optional.
I'll say again, we have a motion in a second to refuse collection to Penn Waste. Questions from anybody? We'll make some people happy that didn't like, you know, our current hauler, we'll see if they're happy with Spex Park. At any rate, I'll call for the, or, yeah, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, so that award is made.
That means we'll be changing recycle bins again.
Yeah.
We'll be getting recycle bins, uh, trash.
Do they pick up the old blue ones?
Yeah.
That's all the.
What am I gonna do with my old trash doter? I'm of a big, I'm, I'm gonna have a gigantic trash can that I'm not gonna have anything to do with.
I told Todd.
Paid a hundred dollars at Home Depot for that thing. I want to get my money's worth.
Well, if they can pick it up with their clinchers, you'd probably be okay.
They do, yeah.
Comp plan?
We have one more award waiting for us, and that is the consultant for the Southern York, York County. I'm not sure I know that they have planning com- What is, what is?
Southern York County Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is for the updated comprehensive plan. Recall last month, we received only one proposal from CS Davidson. Because it's a block grant involved, uh, in the funding for the project, and it's federal money. If you only get one bid, then you're probably able to put it out and bid a second time. If you only get one bid, then you can go with that bid or the new sheet with the, with the, uh, RFP. So we did put it out for bid the second time, we received only one proposal, uh, which was CS Davidson, and anything that changed was the date. The cost, everything remained the same, uh, which is total cost of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. Less that amount with the community development block grant, they received the twenty-five thousand. York County Open Space Grant, we received a fifty thousand, we used a total municipal cost of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents. And then I had the breakdown, uh, because it's a comp plan, and we look at land area, the use, uh, this breakdown is based on square miles of each municipality.
Guess we know who wins that competition.
So it's down at twenty-two thousand, seven hundred, Shrewsbury Township, a nineteen thousand, two hundred nine and four thousand dollars. Because we're, um, eighty-five percent of the land area is in the comp plan.
Uh, if we were to negotiate with a third party, who would we be negotiating with?
I don't think anyone, and the reason I say that is that we reached out to like the two, um, Dan Fleming, um, Baker Company, RGS, they're all large engineering firms.
Nobody wanted it.
And they, they either did not submit a proposal, or two of them got back to us and said, they are just so busy that they, they can't take on more work at this point.
All right, and we're, we're confident CS Davidson's.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that myself.
Number is, isn't, is a fair number, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, their original quote, they didn't know what the competition would be, and they didn't change their quote when they knew they were probably gonna be the only bidder.
Yeah, they, when they, when they submitted their first proposal, they were expecting competition. And it was this ninety-seven thousand, and they could not change that number.
Gotcha.
And actually, they worked better for us because they know the township.
True.
Yeah, so I think it's.
All right.
And I can tell you that after we received the first proposal, I met with the representatives of each of the four boroughs, and they were all comfortable with CS Davidson. We actually met with CS Davidson. Jeff Schu and Jeff did a call for us this time, so we had the opportunity to talk to them, and was, were satisfied.
In that case, I make a motion to approve CS Davidson as the, uh, the firm for the Southern York County. There, there's a lot of letters in there, comp plan. That, thank you. I, I, I got to the RPC and I, I was lost.
We have a motion in a second to approve the bid given to us by CS Davidson. Is that, has to go through approval of the other municipalities as well?
No, because the grants only are made to get to go through the contract and prove.
Okay. That's a part of the perks of paying eighty-five percent of the bill, I guess.
Yeah.
But we would pay a lot more if we didn't have the two grants, so.
And we are thankful for those grants, yes.
All right, if there are no questions, we'll go ahead and vote.
Aye.
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 I contract to CS Davidson, it's approved. If I voted, I didn't, I said aye. So five votes to the affirmative without approval. You have a couple of correspondence pieces, I'm sure you found one of them.
Yeah.
Interesting, but, uh, in your pocket. And that would bring us, are there any questions on your correspondence? That would bring us to closing public comment. Is there anybody here or virtually who wishes to address board at this time?
I have one question. Does Springfield Township, are they voting on the refuse order this year too? I thought I did, I had, because right now, if they have Penn Waste, and if there's gonna be Penn Waste, then they won't be turning around in my lane after this, so we can keep going.
Todd, do you have anything virtually?
No.
Okay.
Not unless Ann or Wendy have anything, but I didn't see anyone waiting or anything, so.
All right, do you want to have a motion?
Motion for dinner.
Second.
So moved.
All favor?
Happy anniversary.